All the ones who come out to county commission meetings, let's see these commissioners. They make decisions, they make the entire county.
Thank you everybody for coming out today. At this time, before I ask for a motion to accept the Cessna agenda, I would like to know, do we have anybody from the audience with something discussing on the Cessna agenda? The Cessna agenda? Anyone from the audience? There's no one from the audience? Can I get a motion from the board to pass the Cessna agenda?
Mr. Chairman, before we get into that, can I pull page eighteen, please?
Pull page eighteen. We should discuss that now or wait till later?
It's no big deal. They just see the schools decided to have their function at the high school.
So page eighteen is gonna be pulled. Now can I get a motion to-
Motion to accept agenda.
Got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels?
Second.
Second by Mr. MacMoore. Any objection? No objections, motion passed, five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, first on your list this morning is Ms. Lynn Yort with Waste Management Services.
Thank you Lynn. Good morning Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. I'm Lynn Yort, and I provide public solutions for the public sector for waste management. You all are one of my best clients, and I appreciate the business with Gulf County. I have been with the company for a little bit less than a year, and want to take the opportunity to say good morning to each of you, let you see my face, so that if you have a question, and I'll leave my number with you, if you need anything at all, just give me a call. I also want to introduce to you Caleb Moran. He is our district manager for this area, and he is where the rubber meets the road. He's where the trucks get to what you need to have picked up, and we will make sure that you have Caleb's cards as well, so that if you need anything in the operations side, he is here for you. And that's all I have. I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
May I, Mr. Chairman? I'd just like to make one comment. You know, this board's been dealing, or Gulf County's been dealing with waste management for years, and all I have to say about waste management is positive.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that.
Good service, good communication, and appreciate having you in Gulf County.
Thank you. And we have been working over the last several months with several of the staff members and a couple of commissioners on some issues and some opportunities over the next few years with you all, so if any of you have any questions, give me a call.
Yeah, Lynn, if you would, get us up some numbers as soon as possible. I know you and I've had probably three or four-
Yes, sir.
I don't know, numerous discussions on this, and let's see where we can go, and see if we can save the people some money and the county some money and-
With a couple of lots.
Waste management, make a little money.
We'd like that. We'd like that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll go to our public here.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. On our planning board and development review board, we had our last hearing on April fifteenth. There was two applications for final approval. The first in front of you, from Mr. Richardson, is with regards to the Palms at Money Bayou. It was a final plat application, and following a preliminary hearing and preliminary approval of the PDRB, it came back for final plat approval. It was recommended by the three members of the PDRB that were in attendance and had the hearing, and there was a recommendation for your final approval of that plat application.
At this time?
Chairman?
Yes?
We have the public, we have three different individuals that would like to speak in reference to that subdivision before the vote goes.
Okay.
The first being Dale Staples, 167 Money Bayou Drive.
Dale?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I've made this trip twice this morning. I forgot some papers, so I just got back, so I'll catch my breath here. My name is Dale Staples. I reside at 167 Money Bayou, my wife and I. I'm here to lay the groundwork for, possibly later on, the understanding that the Palm subdivision, that first phase has been passed, or is going to be passed today. And, but there's, I received from Dr. Hartman, information that the gentleman owns that property, or the gentleman wants to use Money Bayou as a access to his property, which our road is already in disrepair as it is, it needs paving. It's a dead-end street. We have a lot of small children that the people have, and by opening this up and having more homes put in there, it's going to create naturally more traffic, you know? And also, I don't even know how they're gonna build a road going through there. I've looked, but I'm not an engineer. I contacted a lot of the homeowners there. I have emails from them that they couldn't be here. If you'd like, I'd like to read them, what they have to say. Is that possible?
Yes. That'd be fine. Would you give their address?
Okay. This is from, we Karen Beardsley and Charles Mash, homeowners at 173 Money Bayou Drive, are opposed to the construction development that would use Money Bayou Drive as an access road for construction equipment and vehicles for the Palms' development. The tranquility of this locale is in large part due to the dead-end street we live on. Opening this street to the Palms' development would deprive us of our peaceful setting due to the noise and traffic on this eighteen-foot wide road. Also, who would be responsible for the wear and tear on this already aged road? Our home richly became devalued when a trailer was allowed to be put on the lot adjoining our property. Now we're concerned that it would be further devalued with the heavy construction equipment and traffic that would, will destroy our old asphalt road. As an eighth-generation Floridian, I searched the state to find a piece of old Florida to spend the rest of my life. Our location is chosen due to the natural wildlife, pristine habitat, and undeveloped charm of this unique ecosystem. I ask you Commissioners of Gulf County, will you sell out Gulf County like the rest of this state is done? Sincerely, Karen and Charles. That's one.
Mr. Chairman, why don't you go on to the next one? David, do you have a map of this particular one? I don't have one before me. If you've got a map, that'll help the board understand exactly where we're at.
Okay.
Mr. Staples, if you can state the name of the authors of the email again for the Commissioners?
Yes, the one that I just read is from Karen Beardsley. That's B-E-A-R-D-S-L-E-Y, and Charles Mash, M-A-S-H, their husband and wife.
You can go ahead with safety while he's-
Okay. Another one here is from Larry and Pam McArthur, 145 Money Bayou Drive. Regarding proposed construction of the Palm subdivision, to whom it may concern, we're the current homeowners of the property located at 145 Money Bayou Drive. We're writing this letter to express our opposition and concern to the proposed construction of the Palms' division. The constructed neighborhood would only be accessible through the use of our road. This street houses many residents with families and visitors that have small children and pets. If the neighborhood is constructed, our street will feel the brunt of the impact through traffic. This is our main concern, being that we have small grandchildren and friends that use our road for entertainment through riding bikes and playing. We're also concerned with the possibility the neighborhood decreasing our property value. As property owners, we urge you to deny the approval of this construction. It is our fear that development will reduce the harmony and tranquility our family and others have while staying at our residence. Thank you for your time and consideration, Larry and Pam McArthur. This is from Craig Angle and Sarah Ziska at 167 Money Bayou Drive. It is our understanding that final plat application for Phase One of Money Bayou is to be discussed and act upon for approval at the board meeting scheduled April twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen. It's been brought to our attention that the Palm subdivision would use the street, Money Bayou, for access and egress. As the owners of 165 Money Bayou, we strongly oppose any development that would significantly increase the local traffic flow, contribute to the destruction in the current roadway, or negatively impact the property value of our home. Furthermore, we do not support construction that would potentially disrupt delicate balance of the ecosystems in our area. This was from-
I've lost his name.
Georgie and Beth Taaja. It's spelt T-A-J-A. Thanks for sharing the information with me. After further review, I'm totally against the use of Money Bayou Drive Street for access and egress. Please share my sentiments with whomever you deem necessary. Approximately two years ago, we did receive information about the possibility of having these homes built in that area, and at that time, it was proposed, we didn't object to it, because it was proposed to have a bridge that would go across from thirty A onto this property and not come through our street. And so, with the class that we were given and everything else at that time, we didn't object to it. I think everyone ought to be able to do with what they're probably, what they want. There are some other people here that came in person from Money Bayou that will talk and give their opinion on it also. I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as you review those maps and look at the actual plat, just wanted to touch on from the hearing, there's two phases to the Money, the Palms at Money Bayou. The Phase One right now, as it's presented, that was presented to the PDRB, both during the preliminary and the final before it came to you, proposes two home sites. So as you look at that map, you'll see them on there. Phase Two has additional ones that hasn't come before the PDRB for final approval, but on Phase One, you'll see two home sites coming up there.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker?
Wait a minute, we need to clear something right here. Are they on this map?
The area to show that it's north and east of that.
Okay. And we're talking about two partials?
Yes, sir.
How many structures per partial?
Single-family dwelling.
One, so, structures.
Three on Phase, Mr. Commissioner, three on Phase One, six on Phase Two.
What now?
Three units on Phase One, six on Phase Two. We're just, the issue up for vote today is for Phase One, which is be three units.
Sure, we got it right. But this Money Bow, Money Bayou Drive, is that a county-owned, or is that private? It is county-owned.
Public.
Okay, all right.
David, can you explain a little bit on the, you know, you get a lot broader perspective at the PDRB, can you explain a little bit, it's unanimous vote to approve, and there may be some legal issues where we couldn't stop it in the first place, I'm not sure, but can you elaborate?
I can give a long history of this, and it may help understand a little bit. This site has been under development for about the last six or eight years, and it's been, two developers have tried it, and both have failed. The present developer bought it under a tax sale by IRS, and it was sold by Federal Property. So, and proceeded to develop it. As you're a member of the board, and everybody encouraged the developer to sell it if he could, you know, and so far, none of state agencies want to come up with a reasonable amount of money to purchase it, so he had no pro, had no choice but to proceed, you know, with the development. So, the issue is, the property is split by Money Bow. You have the, what we might call the north side, and then you have the south side, or west and east, which one or the other. To get across, to connect them, you would have to build a bridge. There's a lot of complications building the bridge. You're dealing with U.S. Coast Guard now, you're dealing with DEP, you're dealing with U.S. Fish and Wildlife, you're dealing the whole gambit of the acronyms. And plus, the county has a policy in place that require all bridges to be at least eighteen feet wide and, and concrete. This, for six lots, that's pretty cost prohibitive, or expensive. The second issue that came up is, is Sweetwater Shores, which is a private road. The original owners put a little strip to it to stop any further development to, to this, the Phase Two. And then above, we do have Money Bow Drive, which is a county road. It is an older development, you know, it is probably a substandard road, but it is what it is. There's a parcel end of that, that the developer was gonna purchase, so he can extend it and go through the property and access the six lots without having to build a bridge. So that was the last proposal. Through all of these development phases and negotiations, for I understand, I actually, and before I get all the files, communications between the agencies, I understand it'd probably take up three or four banker boxes. So, there's been a lot of negotiations. We warned the developer what he was facing, and he has admitted to me, he says, never did I think I was gonna face this. He says, you warned me. You deal with the coastal section of DEP, then you deal with the wetland section of DEP, then you deal with the surface water section of DEP, and then I'm gonna talk to each other. All of them have their little connection, it's just on and on. So, this is where the developers come to, is on Phase Two, is trying to, you know, make a simple solution, and economical and things like this. But what was before the board was to get started on Phase One, which is the three units, which would be connected off thirty, County Road Thirty A, and it's on the upper upland section of the development, and so that's what the PDRB addressed. Phase Two is still yet to come and resolve, and is what the comments were based on Phase, on Phase Two. So, and those, those issues have been discussed, and they've been presented to the board, and they're being considered. So it probably will boil down to, you know, how the county feels about, you know, extending Money, Money Bayou Drive. The developer, as a concession and helping, he's, when Phase Two comes in, he is gonna extend the sewer past the development and leave a tie-in for Sweetwater Shores to, you know, to go to sewer and things like that. So, I think there's a give and take on the part of the developer to try to, you know, make it workable, but that's in summation what it is, and yes, Mr. Commissioner, is that generally, once you give preliminary, you're pretty much locked in of approval. You can tweak it, but you better not deny it, or it's a long road. And that goes, that's, that's, that's a national trend, so it's just not local.
Let me understand, this first phase is, is three?
Three. Yes, sir, three units.
And second phase?
Six units. Depending on-
So a total of nine?
Total of nine. Depending on, you know, the final outcome of permitting and everything like this. That's the goal.
Attorney, you have anything to add to that?
No, just, and I know there's additional public comments, so if the Commission wants to hear those first, but with regards to some of the emails and the concerns expressed by Mr. Staples, that comes up before the PDRB on any development application. So, when you have these plat applications that come in, the impact to the environment on the coastal communities, on the beaches and the Cape are always a consideration. The, the wear and tear in the construction, this is a county road, so taking that into consideration, it is private property, and there's access to it. This plat for Phase One is three homes along this first part. That's six, six additional home sites down the road on Phase Two is not before you today. So there are, we hear that at the PDRB, they heard those concerns on this Phase One, and they are valid concerns with regards to the impact, both to the community. However, to restrict one's ability to develop a piece of property versus the three that are before you today, that is not a private road. So, they're talking about, obviously, being substandard, that may be an issue, obviously, to look at down the road, but as it stands right now, in terms of the legalities of their application, they've met the requirements, they went through the pre-proposal phase, and the preliminary was approved by both the PDRB and this county. At this point, they're coming for final plat. They still have to go through all the permitting processes, and Phase Two is not before you all today. So, like I said, they are, Mr. Staples' comments are, were taken into consideration by the PDRB at that time.
Well, I have one question here, I haven't looked at, I'll just ask it here for the general. These three units in the Phase One, Mr. Richards came up a while ago with it, with the north side and the south side is split by them. Where will these three go? They'll be in the north portion that you was talking about on the south? They will be access-
On the west part.
On the west? Okay, all right.
They'll be up the corner.
Yeah, I know, I was just asking there, 'cause you already, I know the PDRB has been over this thoroughly. Now, will they, will they be at the, at the end of County Road, what's the name of it? Money Bayou Drive?
No, sir, they're, they're, the only access would be off County Road Thirty A.
Thirty A.
Before the bridge. Access be just before the bridge.
Before the bridge, okay.
Yeah, they're before, these three lots are before the bridge. Phase Two is after the bridge.
Okay, all right. Phase Two is after, okay, all right. That's all. So, how would this affect Money Bow Drive then, if they coming off of Thirty A? It would not.
Phase Two.
Phase One will not affect Money Bow Drive, only Phase Two potentially.
We're talking about Phase One today, though.
There may be some more comments from the public.
Mr. Chairman, we have two more to speak. Lisa Grunwald?
Lisa? Say Lisa?
Good morning. How's everybody this morning? Very good. We had one more email that we wanted to read, from Teresa Prince. To whom it may concern, Terry and Teresa Prince, who live at 166 Money Bayou, do not want our road extended for a subdivision. Reasons are as follows: Our streets are small and cannot support more traffic. Large trucks going in and out to this new subdivision will destroy our road, and many of the houses on Money Bayou are rented out to families with small children, so more traffic would be very dangerous. Thank you, Terry and Teresa Prince. Now, that is about Phase Two, which I know we're not here for today. I think our concern was that we weren't aware of the previous meetings. They were in the paper, but we didn't receive notice at our homes, probably because this doesn't affect us, and it's just a budding property that receives a notice. But we're preparing for Phase Two of this development, and we wanted to give you all a heads-up today, since we missed the last meeting. Apparently, there's nothing we can do about Phase One. It's a done deal. I don't think anybody here wants to tell the developer, hey, the government sold you swampland, but that's basically what's happened here. And from what I understand, he's planning to put some sort of steel plate in to block some of the sediment and sludge that would be going into the bayou. Now, is that correct? Is this the phase he wanted to put in the steel?
There's a potential of using a retaining wall to buffer the area where the road might come in into the Phase Two. Yes, ma'am, it's, it's potentially, if it's permitted. And from what I understand, it is being leaned to by the agencies, I could be wrong.
All right, well, our concern, obviously, is for the health of the bayou, and to me, that's first and foremost. I am currently living at 178 Money Bayou, and I'm buying 144 Money Bayou and closing this month. My concern, obviously, is my investment. I'm paying top dollar for the house I'm buying, and I do not want the traffic that's gonna be brought in by, by Phase Two of the development. I'm concerned about the bayou. It's pretty clear that no matter what he does, there's going to be silt in the bayou as a result of the construction. We are currently crabbed there on a weekly basis. People stop, hundreds of people crabbing Money Bayou a year. It's a very popular crabbing place, also shrimping. I hear that there is an environmental impact study. Do we have a copy of that? Is there any way I can get a copy of the environmental impact study?
Nah, representative developers here, so if the board wishes, he can address a lot of these issues.
Okay.
Ms. Grunwald, you can get anything we have, you can get a copy of too, so we can, like I said, we can get a copy of it.
Okay, thank you very much. Also, my concern about the new road is, who will maintain it? Will it be the county or the developer? It's a county road, but obviously, it's gonna require monthly maintenance if there's constant traffic on it. I doubt seriously the county will be able to have somebody in there monthly to repair the potholes. The impact of the traffic of seven to eight houses will be forty percent more traffic on our road. That's a pretty big hit for us, for a small road that doesn't even have two lanes. I'd like for you all to reconsider this. I know that he seems to have gone all the way in the process. It is his property, he did pay for it, but there has got to be some way that we can protect the environment while we deal with him. I don't trust the environmental impact study, in that I think several should be done before the bayou is compromised like this. And I thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, Sparky Jenkins, 190 Money Bayou Drive.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Sparky Jenkins. I, my family was one of the first ones to build in Money Bow. Back when we built, everything was segregated, and that was one of the only beaches you can build on, one of the six in the state of Florida, that a person of color could, could own a beach lot. Mr. Damon Peters sold us a lot for a very high price, five hundred dollars, in which my father had to borrow to buy, to be able to buy the lot, had to borrow the money. My father got interested in Money Bow from hearing stories from his grandfather, who was born a slave in eighteen sixty. And my family's been enjoying the bow and, and those beaches for that many generations. That area means a lot to me and my family. We, we've even torn down the old house and built a new one at great expense, thanks to the mortgage that the Smith family gave us, at Capital City Bank. We probably could've got a nicer piece of property with nice, clear water, like on the Cape. Of course, that's why we were allowed to buy that for thirty thousand dollars, the Peters and all that, 'cause that's a little stretch of muddy water. You guys got the clean water, we got the muddy water. I don't care, we like Money Bow. I've seen a lot of changes in the environment in the Money Bow area since I grew up there. I'm in my mid-sixties. And everything we do has an impact on the crabs and the, the life that's in the bow, the turtles that come and go, there are periods of time when we don't see the turtles. And I'm afraid if you start building more habitat for us, the turtles will go, the pelicans are trying to come back, the gators are starting to come back. The bow used to be full of alligators, and just like a lot of areas in Florida, the gators went away. However, they are starting to come back. People are not stopping on the bridge and just shooting them for the hell of it like they used to. But you go build up that bow, the gators will be gone, the turtles definitely will be gone. We do have a little beach mouse running around there. I'm not that fond of mice, but, you know- I'm not that fond of mice, but you know, he, he's a critter that God gave us, and, and he knows why that mouse should be there. But I ask you guys to please look closely at what you're doing, because the Bowel is sensitive. One guy dredged off the water many years ago to feed his oysters, and it changed the Bowel. We had a lot of fish life die, the crabs went away. And finally, it silted in, and now the Bowel is opening and closing like nature intended it to do. So it, it also moves around from, from east to west. It's always done that, as long as I can remember, and, and my daddy, who would it be, 100 years old, three years from now, told me that Bowel moves around. That's the way it works. I wouldn't mess with that. So my appeal to you is please watch what these outsiders are doing to our, our land. That, that some of you all have the same blood I do. You know, we, we fought the mosquitoes and, and, and all the elements to, to live in this land that was considered worthless. That's why the other people weren't here many, many years ago. I've seen some paperwork that show that land was for sale for $0.50 a acre, because it doesn't grow anything. It won't produce cattle. So we, you know, our forefathers eked out a living in Gulf County and Franklin County, so I think we deserve to have some of that remain in its natural state, so our kids can enjoy it like we did. So that's basically what I wanted to say. Nice meeting you all.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you.
And do we have anyone else?
No, sir, that's all.
Anyone else from the public? Come on up, please.
Can you give your name and your address to the clerk? My name is Delaney Banne, B-A-N-N-E, and I live at 179 Money Bayou. And I haven't been here that long, I just purchased last year, but I am very concerned about the effect on, on the environment. There were three or four turtle nests in, right in that area, right next to the bayou, that were fenced off last year. And I also read that the Turtle Conservancy releases turtles in that area, and as Sparky also stated, there is the protected mouse that lives in that area. A neighbor, I, we don't know who it was, but put poison out for the mice and accidentally killed a neighbor's dog. So I'm afraid the more people that are there, the more danger is going to be for these animals. And does anyone know John Erman? Because I know he's, he's on the board with the Friends of Port St. Joe Peninsula, and I think in January, February of this year, he made a proposal to try and purchase this whole area, to put a park in that area, where there would be a tower, a large observation I can, I found this online, a document that I'd be happy to share with you. I also took pictures of the turtle nests, then you can see how close they are to the existing houses right now. And also, there are signs that say, please do not drive on the dunes there. And that's right in front of that property, I think, that we're talking about. I'm not real sure about that, but I know that they are trying to protect that area, it seems to me. And I know it would have a huge impact on the life, the wildlife there, not to mention the crabbing and the fishing that the, the kids love to do. The kids love that area because they can swim without the waves and the threat of sharks. So that's all I have to say that I can think of. Thank you.
Have any fingers from the board?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, all of these concerns that these folks have brought up are concerns all throughout the county, especially in South Gulf County with, with Commissioner Bryan and, and myself and, and beach areas. We've had many discussions with DEP, with US Fish and Wildlife, with all of our endangered species. And over the years, Gulf County has, has put in their LDRs some very strong restrictions to make sure that our general area stays like it is, so to speak, not to have the high rises that other counties want, want to have, like the Bay Counties and Walton Counties and all. I think we'll always be this small community that, that protects our environment, and that's what draws people to our community. Problem that we have is, is in the densities. Apes and blasts, the general area is, is two units per acre on the bay and three units per acre on the Gulf. There's height restrictions, there's all type of restrictions. Most of the properties that are built on are, are ahead of the CCA, they have to get DEP permits. Much of the permitting process that will go, go forward with this particular development probably will be through DEP. David, am I right?
Yes, sir.
So while I understand the valid concerns, and I, I was born here and raised here, and mullet fished in that, and, and crabbed in, in Money Bowel, and, and have done all those things, when you have a private owner of private property that's trying to develop their property within the guidelines that we've set forth, I can understand why there was a 3-0 vote. Now, obviously, I think DEP is going to make sure that they construct those correctly and go by all the rules. I think at the end of the day, this first one with this first phase, we have to approve. Second phase, there may be more discussion on the roadway, how we deal with that roadway, how we, you know, you know, how, how, how does that impact further, that, that properties? And DEP and the Corps of Engineers and all those others will be intricately involved in those discussions. So that being said, Mr. Chairman, you know, I, I don't see any, any other way that we, we shouldn't follow with the PDR Board's recommendation.
And in the form of a motion?
Uh-uh, motion. Yeah, yeah, so moved.
I got Ms. Yeager, oh, motion from Mr. Yeager.
I got Ms. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniel.
Phase One.
Phase One, yes. Do I have any opposed? Opposed, motion carries, five and no.
Mr. Chairman, number two on the Planning Board Agenda for the 15th was a plat application for a minor subdivision. It had received preliminary approval from you all back in March. It came back before the Planning Board for final plat application and approval. That, too, was recommended to you all for adoption on a unanimous vote of 3-0 last Monday.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Mr. Macklemore.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yeager. Do I have any opposed? Opposed, motion carries, five and no.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if David wanted to comment on the scope, the scoping hearings that we had with regards to land development regulations. We had our second public hearing. I didn't know, David, if you wanted to touch on it now or...
No, just that we'll be proceeding forward with the revisions, LDRs through, through, through May, and we have a June 30 deadline as far as the tech grant goes. So Bob's things are going to be moving pretty fast, and we'll be taking any public comment through the time and, and be reviewing it. And that's all. And comments from the board as we go forward. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we're going to our county staff business. Uh, Ms. Carrie? Sheriff?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman, but just a reminder about the public budget hearing.
Five o'clock.
5:01, yes, sir.
5:01, today.
Say that again, now, Ms. Sheriff.
We have the supplemental budget hearing this evening at 5:01.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lynn?
No, sir, I don't have anything.
Jump.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, good morning. I just wanted to give you a quick update on our, the media fam tour we had in here last week. We hosted 20 travel riders on behalf of No Worries Vacation Rentals. They donated over $8,500 worth of accommodations for the week. We had a long, very good week. They fished, and they fished, and they fished, and they interacted with the county, and they, at the, when they left on Saturday, they told Zach and me that they want to make this an annual event. So that is huge for us. Nowadays, with travel riders and fam tours, they don't interact, they're not allowed to even, we had a reception for them where we invited many of the charter captains and people who knew about our ecosystem and our waters, and they came, and it was a great event, and they got the insider tips, and just that interaction was fantastic. Typically, that doesn't happen. Years back, you could bring them around the county and do an agenda, and they did whatever you say. And now, with that, you know, with the world of editorial just diminishing, this is, this was a big coup for us. So I personally wanted to thank No Worries Vacation Rentals, St. Joe Company, everybody who helped us with these riders. They were all over the county, they're going to come back and go up to the Dead Lakes because of weather, they did not get to fish as much up there as they wanted to. So that was a huge coup, and I wanted to thank everybody for that.
Mr. Houston?
The third week of May is going to be EMS Week, National EMS Appreciation Days. Last year, we done a appreciation dinner for the EMS service. We'd like to try to do that again this year, and maybe use the, uh, Montego Community Center again. We're also doing a poster contest like we did last year in the third grades of north end to south end of the county. This turned out to be a good success, we had a lot of participation in it, we gave out little awards for that, and we had a lot of public service from that.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. I actually participated a little bit in that last year, and they did a excellent job with that, so I...
Motion by Mr. Macklemore.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yeager. Do I have any opposed? Opposed, motion carries, five and no. It's Brett.
I don't have any.
Marshall.
I don't have a mic, Chairman.
David.
Just to maybe allude to the board, just to, I probably don't know of a piece of acreage in Gulf County that has undergone review. That acreage has gone through and is continuing to be reviewed by the agency. So rest assured, it's, it's been vetted from top to bottom, inside and out, so before it's all over with.
Thanks, Dave.
Mr. Hammer?
I don't have anything. I think Commissioner Macklemore is going to bring up whatever.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just wanted to follow up on our special meeting last Tuesday morning. On the 16th, we had a special meeting, emergency meeting called, and went into closed session. As a follow-up, just to report to the commission and the public, per your directions, we move forward, working with BP, over the following days. On Saturday, without resolution for either of the claims, both our firms, Beasley Allen and Nix Patterson, did file suit in the Northern District of Florida, the U.S. Federal District Court. And I just wanted to note that for you all and for the public. I just wanted to thank the staff, obviously putting all that data together to get them, the firms where they needed to be, was a tremendous effort, and I just wanted to thank them as well. The other issue I had was with regards to Triumph Gulf Coast, and I believe the commissioner's going to touch on that as well. That's all I have.
Mr. Buck?
Mr. Chairman, one item. It's two parts. I've got some quotes, some verbal quotes on a problem that the Fox Cover on the west side of 30B on 38, this side of Royal Bar, and also on Cypress Creek Bridge on Old Street Road, just close to Mr. Harmon's house, close to 15th Street and Mexico Beach. But the board will agree, if his quotes do intend to come in higher than our bid limit to allow us to go out for bids on those two, two projects, the approaches to the bridge on Cypress Creek on Old Street Road and the Fox Cover on 38, west of 30B.
I need, I need a...
So moved, Mr. Chairman. They need to be fixed.
Got to be fixed, second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniel.
Got to be fixed.
Any opposed? Opposed, motion carries, five and no.
That's all I have.
Sheriff.
Yes, sir, I do have a couple items, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to discuss. The first one, beginning with, with Windmark Beach out there, gated, they have gated off that gated community now, and what that is doing. We, we fought this issue for, seemed like every time we turned around, they're stopping us from the public, from using those docks out there. Now, am I correct? We, we do have right of way to those docks. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney, or am I wrong with that?
Under the agreement we have with Windmark and the DRI, there is access to those beach and the docks, and they're to provide it. Now, that road that they've gated off, I believe two or three months ago was properly done, it is a private road, and they have permission to, they're authorized to do that. They put the proper sign and gateage up. The parking directly north to that, there's, I believe, I think it's 35 or 40 parking spaces. We've worked with St. Joe and their representative for some additional spots that you all voted on last fall to add additional signage, and then the old deceleration lane along Highway 98 heading north, there was to be an additional 30 spaces placed along the road there. Now that that gate has gone up, I'm anticipating, obviously, those spaces that you all agreed to back in November, October last year are being put in to handle any of the additional vehicular traffic or public access to those beaches. But the gate that was put up was properly done by Windmark and their, and their association.
Okay, here's where they outsmarted us then. Now we got to walk a half a mile to get to that dock. So that's an issue. But anyway, it is what it is legally, I've heard from you, so I'm okay with that. Next item, Ms. Yellen, I want to approach you with this, maybe you can answer some questions for me on it. We have a ditch out there, I call it the Jimmy Conway's Place. It's a major drainage ditch that we have. I know this board just took action on. We've done the legal part on it, we've signed leases on it, limited maintenance agreements. And my question to you is, why did you stop work on it? Why did you instruct the supervisor not to go back out there? And that's my only question, you know?
Well, Commissioner Macklemore, I've never stopped work on anything that was public right of way or, or county right of way. The only thing that I've ever said since I've been a county commissioner to the work crews is that they need to always do what they're supposed to do with their work crews. I don't want our guys that supervise the work crews risking their certifications. And we can ask Mr. Lewis or, or Mr. Danford to come up and comment on this. I've had a conversation with Mr. Lewis. I really don't know where this is coming from, Commissioner Macklemore.
Where it's coming from is that from the supervisor's own words was that you asked him to stop work on that ditch. So that's, and my only question is, is, you know, is why, if we've done all the legal documents and signed off on it? That's my only question.
My understanding is that the ditch is supposed to be maintained, so that the ditch functions in its drainage capacity, but it should not be maintained up the banks into the private property.
I understand that.
And that was the discussion.
So we're okay then to maintain the ditch with you?
So, well, who told you that I said that the ditch could not be maintained?
That's not an issue, you know? An issue is can we continue to clean the ditch? That's the main issue.
We should continue to do what we should do legally, in, in the entire county. We should always follow what the law says and what we are supposed to maintain. We should not be maintaining private property. We should not be maintaining private drives.
I understand that.
If it is a drainage canal that we maintain, then we maintain it. Can we ask Mr. Lewis to come up and comment on that particular drainage canal?
You know, I don't want to get Mr. Lewis in the crossfire here. I just want us to have a clear understanding and for him to understand that it is okay for us to do limited maintenance or whatever to keep the water flowing at ditch.
Let me clarify one thing. I am not a county commissioner that makes my own rules. I follow the rules, I follow the state statutes, so I just want to clarify that.
No doubt.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Bryan, we had a, we had a conversation about the ditch, and she asked me about the ditch, and, you know, I told her we clean it. We don't clean it that often, we, you know? But the problem with the ditch, you know, if you've got one section, just say the ditch runs three quarters of an mile, you know, around, and you can't clean but 300 yards of it, you're not doing no good. If you can't get in there and clean the whole ditch where the water run, you're actually, you're actually... you're actually just, I mean, you're not solving the problem is what I'm trying to get at, you know? But we did, we, when we, just like I told Ms. Bryan, when we did clean the ditch, we, you know, we did get permission and to do the ditch.
So we're good to go on, continue to maintain what you've maintained in the past then? Is that not correct?
And, Mr. Lewis, our conversation was that whatever is necessary for proper drainage for county purposes was to be maintained. Is that correct?
That's right. Yes, ma'am.
And, and I believe that that's the way it should be done.
I'm good with it. Let me, we had a similar incident with this up in the north end of the county in District One and Mr. McLemore's, he represents, but I took the lead on it. Well, we have a ditch and this, all this area, all the water is channeled through this ditch. And got the attorney involved, I got the county administrator involved. At that time, Mr. New was over the public works. We went up with a landowner. We had to go across his property to get to this ditch and he signed all the documents, giving us permission to go across his property to get there to clean this ditch. Now, we probably won't have to go back in there maybe for 10 years, but it had grown up, so what it was doing, it was holding the water back and the water would not drain. So these limited liabilities now, you know, we have to do that occasionally. But all the water in that particular area in the five acre farms, everything channeled into this one major ditch and we had to go in there and get it. And we, you know, we went through all, like I say, the limited maintenance agreement, everything. The attorney even came up himself to look it over and make sure that all the i's were dotted and the t's were crossed with the property owners. So, but no, I agree, Mr. Bryan. Now, we don't do work on people's private property. I've had some to ask me sorry and do it. But sometimes we do have to cross private property to get through these areas, keep this drainage off and, and it does, it helps with the mosquito problems that we have. So we have situations here where we do have to make exceptions too.
And I'm fine, you know, I think we've got it all cleared out now.
No, we're not going out and mow Mr. Conway's grass for the general public or manicure his yard, but if we need to go across there to get to this ditch, yes, Mr. Conway will give us permission to cross his property. I think supervisors are clear now. I'm clear. We're clear on this, so we're good to go with this issue. Next issue I have to deal with industrial park. Here, here's what we've got up there and here's what we've been working on for 10 years. We have finally gotten a company that is renting or leasing that building for us, that is going to put people to work. But they're needing a little bit of, a little bit of stuff. And here's, here's what we have. We have a building up there and a parking lot that we own, the county owns, and legally we don't have a front entrance to that building. The only way they can go and get into that building is through the back door. So what I'm asking this board to do is support me with this project. I worked it Monday. I've been working it for weeks now, trying to get the doors open on this thing. I'm asking the board for their support. Let me continue to work with this company. Let's get these doors open come May the first. Let's get some employees hired. I do want to spend a very small amount of money, which we have money for, for a cover pipe. I want to put in a driveway, a front entrance driveway to this building. So what I need to do is ask the board for their support. Get in behind me with this project. Let me get the doors open. I'm making a motion to that.
Got a motion by Mr. McLemore. Got a second for comments?
Uh, I'll second for comment, Mr. Chairman, please, or a question. Now, we're talking about placing a entrance that's off of Highway 71.
Yes, sir. That's where it has to go to.
Yeah. Now, they do, they can come off of 380, what is that, 382?
380. 381. You know, I haven't thought about that, Mr. McDaniel. That may be a easier project there to, to get done, really and truly, coming off on 381.
If you come off 71, you're going to have to get a DOT permit.
Exactly. And you've got to go through the state. But what I'd like to do, if, if the board allows me to continue on this project and supports me, what I'd like to do is address Mr. Collinsworth to get on this and let's look at the permitting system, whatever it takes, and, and get it done.
Is this the same building that we gave them an incentive, lowered lease payment and also 100% credit towards the purchase of the building? Is, is this the same building?
Yes, ma'am. This is the building and I can tell you, and I really and truly want to know where this, but I can tell you this building, I don't think's ever had any maintenance to it. It's sat there for seven years. This building is ran down, whatever. This company is going to have to spend, they're going to have to go in there and replace every single bit of that carpet. There's major work that this company is going to have to do just to get the doors open on this building.
Now, when I went up there about a month or so ago, I drove in, drove around to the front, parked right in front. I don't, I'm not sure that I understand what the issue is with entering property.
Let me clear that for you then. If you look on the survey map or the planning map, whatever, it clearly shows and, and we have each corner marked and flagged now. If you want to go back up there, we can show you the property lines. 71 here, building here, actually the county owns the square here. Mr. Taunton owns over here and the driveway is actually goes in over on Mr. Taunton's property. He owns all of this here. County does not own it. We own the back entry here that goes into the back door of the building, but all of this...
So he couldn't enter this way and go around?
Not really.
Well, then you can have a license agreement or a use agreement on a neighboring property without having to build a new entrance. I'll, I'll tell you, after our last go around with this where we, the board, voted to give 100% credit of the lease payments to the purchase of the property, I was contacted by numerous citizens that were unhappy with that. They felt that that was excessive. And I, I think that we need to be cautious with everything that we are giving on this property. We can't afford to do this for everyone in the county and we need to be cautious with the way we spend the county's dollars.
Okay, what I, what I'm looking at here, and I agree with you, Ms. Bryan, I don't have a problem with being very cautious here with this. Here, we have a building that sat here for seven, eight, 10 years or whatever. That's deteriorated. We have now a paying company that has leased this building from us, who will put people to work. This is something that we have done that EDC cannot get done, Board cannot get done. We have an opportunity here. It is a win-win for the county. We're going to be getting dollars back on this, plus we're going to get a updated building that's workable. So I see it as a win-win for the board.
Okay, if we got any, if, it seems like the only thing really that you're talking about spending money on really is the covert. I mean, we can do...
That's it.
Okay. We have some leftover, I, I think we've got some leftover covert pipe from something that I saw out there. I don't know if it's specific for something else. Do we have, are we going to have to buy the covert pipe?
Yeah, we will, Warren. Those, all those pipes, you see out there?
Yeah.
That's pipes that was hopefully thinking of to do.
Okay. Tied with, okay.
Mr. Yeager, now listen, I don't, I don't want to, that, that's the only dollar amount that we're going to actually have to go out there. What I, what I would like to ask the board to do is let me take my work crew and do a little bit here, a little bit there, nothing major. I want to be out of there, I want to be out of that building by tomorrow.
You know... When does that contract start, first?
May first. May first. But the covert pipe is the big issue.
Well, here's the way I'm looking at it. We just sat here a few moments ago and talked about landowners having conflicts. Now, if we go sign an agreement with who, Mr. Taunton, I think it'd be the best interest of this county. That building will become ours here in a few years, but I think in the best interest of this county that we put the cover in and we, we don't have to go and ask Mr. Taunton for his blessings or if we have a little differences of thing, have that held over our head. I'd rather just sever ties there, put in our cover and then we home free.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel.
It's going to cost us some money, but I think we'll be better in the long run. I honestly do.
Yeah, what's a, a covert pipe? Mr. Jake, what is that, $300 we're looking at? You're going to have to have a 40 footer probably. I, I, I don't know.
You're probably looking at around $600.
Around $600. You know, I guarantee you, Mr. Taunton is a businessman. I don't feel like he will give us an agreement free of charge. And I think Mr. McDaniel's right, let's do this and get it over with. We have monies coming in now from the lease agreement. So I have a motion on the table.
Mr. Novak, is it true that there is no drive to the side of that building to maneuver around the building, that you would be on Taunton's property? Is it, is it a zero lot line type situation?
Commissioner, I haven't been up there, I haven't driven through that complex probably in over a year, but the time that I did, the front entrance, you come across the Taunton property along 71, or you have to turn down off the county road and come in from the side and enter the back of the property. But there's no access on the actual county's, county sold off all the adjoining properties.
If you enter from that side entrance and come around from the back, you can't drive up the other side of the building?
Last time I was up there, I don't believe you could. That's right.
Oh, that's what I'm asking the board.
Got a motion by Mr. McLemore. I had a second for comment. Now, do we have a second?
Second stand.
Mr. Mike Daniel says second stand. Do I have any opposed?
I'm going to oppose.
Got one opposed, motion carries, four to one.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have and I thank the board.
Mr. Yeager?
A couple things. The last week, I've called Tallahassee two or three different times to work on issues that are concerning to counties and, and our county in particular. One of those issues was Tuesday, I had to go, go up to testify on the Medicaid issue. What they're, what they're attempting, what the legislature is attempting to do is change how we pay our Medicaid payments. And instead of going by use, they're going, they're, they're wanting to change that to, to the number of people that have signed up for Medicaid in your, in your county. Now, while that might be easy and good for us to figure out a budget each year, it certainly doesn't reflect what might or might not be used within your community. So almost all counties are opposed to that and the reason they are is because the, the number that, numbers that they're using out of the 67 counties, like 58 of them will go up, including Gulf County's up 10%. So we've been working that issue all week long. They've got, they actually wanted me up there at nine o'clock this morning, but I had this board meeting, so they've got a meeting today. They're trying to work that issue out. I've met with Marty Coley. I've met with Mr. Mumford, Senator Mumford, met with Jimmy Petronas and, and many others. And I think that during this meeting today, they're going to get that either better defined or either put it off till next year when they can come up with something else. Just for the public's information, and this is what most people don't even realize what their property taxes are paying, but in Gulf County alone, we paid up to, they're estimating us to pay $191,000 this year for Medicaid, Medicaid alone. That's, that's your tax dollar coming out, coming out, coming out of your property taxes. In addition to that, we help fund the health department. In addition to that, you voted yourselves a 25, or half cent sales tax to pay for indigent care, to, to bring that hospital in there, for the tune of $25 million. I'm not sure that the Florida Legislature or anybody else realizes how much the taxpayer's paying for indigent care, Medicaid and all these issues. So what we're trying to do with this Medicaid issue is just make sure we get it right. If they're, if they're county residents and, and they're provided a service here, then Gulf County's taxpayers are obligated to pay that. There's, there's many other issues in healthcare. I would hate to see the percentage of our tax dollars that goes to healthcare. I know we have to have a, a doctor for the, for the jail. We've got to have a medical director for our EMS. All of these things, we have to supplement EMS because 99% of them don't, don't break even. But the amounts that your tax dollars are paying in for healthcare is tremendous and this is one that we need to get right. So when I leave this board meeting, if they still haven't hit that issue, I'm going to go up there again and, and, you know, try to get this issue straightened out for the betterment of not only Gulf County, but for all the counties. Another issue, I got called up by the Secretary of DOC on a Thursday night to come up Friday morning at 10 o'clock in the meeting. When you get called up by the secretary, you generally go. So we went up there and he's got a budget issue and he's got an issue with the legislature that's cutting his budget down. And what he's told me is one of the five ways that he's going to get to that number is cut every free work crew out in every county. That, that amounts to about 130 work crews over the 67 counties. We, in Gulf County alone, that would affect seven work crews. Now, we have some paid work crews that Gulf County provides. That would be seven work crews in Gulf County that they would cut out. Where they would come from? I don't know because the city gets, gets one or two, the school board gets one, we get, we get, how many do we get now, Don, with, they provide a...
Four or five.
Ah, four or five that they provide. And so they, it would cut those out. I don't think I have to explain to the public how much work we get out of those work crews. So immediately, I think he was using the Small County Coalition and us to go back to the legislature, which we did right when we left that meeting at 11 o'clock on Friday, and start lobbying for monies to go back into those programs to make sure those programs aren't cut. I think, I think that's going to get fixed. I think there's enough senators and representatives that represent, represent small communities that, that that's going to get fixed. But that's another thing that they're discussing today in this conference. The other legislation is restore. Senator Gates helped, other senator write some legislation that was basically going to look like to us and look like to our attorney, the consortium attorney, that it was going to take the money that was supposed to go to the eight counties from the Restore Act and, and put it over a, I think they called it a Triumph Gulf Coast Incorporated Group that would be about five members, I think, and for them to be over that specific money. And that's not the way the legislation was, was written, not the way the federal legislation was written, federal act. So our attorney believes, number one, that's, that's not going to fly as far as the law is concerned. Believes, number two, that now, that I've been getting texts this morning, now that I think that they've got some changing in that and what they're going to refer to is some monies that, that Pam Bond, the Attorney General, is filing for the state of Florida. So I think that we've got that issue worked out. To be perfectly honest with you, it's, it's, it was a grab, I thought, by the state when they let the counties go up and lobby for the Restore Act. Congressman Sutherland and Senator Nelson and Senator Landrow and all worked really hard and brought people up to help lobby Congress. When Congress couldn't agree, agree on anything, we got 73 votes, 73 senators voted for that act. And so it was a popular act. It, it, it made sense to send the monies back to the states. So the state should really kind of thank the county for going up there and, and the counties, there was 30 of us, thank us for going up there and getting that Restore Act passed where 80% would come back to the states, counties and the communities. So that's where, that's where some of the legislation at. There's two weeks left in, in the legislative... So that's where, that's where some of the legislation at. There's two weeks left in, in the legislature. I don't know how all of it will play out at the end of the day, but that's just a, a little bit of update of what's going on that will affect your pocketbook as a taxpayer. Wanted to give you that little rundown. Um, also, I've, I got a letter from City of Weewaw, and Joe, I spoke with him briefly on it, and he can give us an education, and maybe Don can too, but basically what some of the, uh, well, it was the mayor who I ran into of Weewaw, and he, he was saying that traditionally, they've used our landfill for a laydown during storms. And I think that we've made a decision not to allow them to do that, for whatever reason. I told him I'd, I'd come down and see what we could work out and find, find out if we could help them out. Uh, working with both cities is what we, we, we would love to do. And Joe tells me there's some reasons that, 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 that we don't want to do that, and Joe, you can elaborate, and then I may have a question or two for the attorney, and see if we can't, see if we can't work that out.
All right, yeah. I told the City of Weewaw, no. First off, they have their own waste stream. If they bring hazardous waste in onto our property, it becomes our problem. And we have deeper pockets than they do. DEP will go after the ones with the deepest pockets. FEMA does not like debris from different areas commingled. And in a storm event, it's very difficult to keep debris separated. The City of Weewaw needs to handle its own debris, and needs to handle its own problems. Go on to the days when we can rush to their aid on this. We don't have enough people to go out and do their cleanup. They've hired their own company to do their cleanup, and they need to handle their own debris.
Joe, would it, for a laydown yard for storm debris, because this is what it's about, is storm debris, would they need, need any type of permit?
Uh, no, all they have to do is, uh, designate a certain area of their property or lease some property, and have, uh, Karina from DEP come down, and she'll look it over and...
Well, one of the things I was thinking about is because we've got that eighty acres up there that's stipulated for, for landfill, is leasing them a little portion of that, you know, they may never use it, or they may use it once every ten years. But, and, and then I guess the question to the attorney is, can you, can you lease it and have a whole harmless where, uh, you know, it doesn't fall back on the county?
Commissioner, Joe brought this to my attention last week, and we discussed it. Um, to answer your question, yes, you can lease, um, but it goes back to what we had discussed last week, which is we kind of sat back and evaluated the exposure and the liability to the county. What we'd essentially be doing by leasing the property is essentially the same thing, which is giving control of a layoff yard that's not under the control or guidance of the county. We can't control what goes into that layoff yard, and it's off-site. So we wouldn't be able to supervise it, it'd still technically be our property. So even if we leased it, that exposure and liability would still come back to the county. So whether it be commingling with our yard, or giving them a designated spot on a county piece of property, ultimately, if, obviously, they came back and FEMA looked at that, and there was hazardous materials on that layoff yard, we're still gonna be brought into that same exposure, that liability. So it wouldn't be advisable, and, and, and based on Joe's recommendation, we looked at it, it was just too much potential being understaffed and being undermanned to be able to monitor what another municipality is doing on our property.
Joe, what, and I'm not trying to create anything here. What does the city, the City of Port St. Joe have their laydown yard?
I don't know. I really don't, uh...
If the same, say we had a major disaster here or there, what, what's gonna be?
The City of Port St. Joe needs to hire their own debris company.
And Weewaw's already hired one.
Yes, a- and their debris company will, uh, most likely use parks.
What now?
They'll most likely use parks as laydown areas. Unless...
Whose parks?
Their city parks. Uh, or if the city has a chunk of land somewhere, they can designate that. They have to go to DEP and tell DEP where these sites are, even if it's gonna be a park. I- if it's a bad storm, they'll use corners of intersections or anything that's available.
Well, they're strict.
They have in the past.
Not just every day?
It, it's not every day. Th- this is a disaster, and
Disaster, okay.
Anything and everything that, uh, you can imagine.
I think probably DEP, and FEMA, if they get involved, will probably relax the rules a little bit, temporarily.
They, they typically do relax the rules, but they don't relax the rules when it comes to hazardous waste.
I, I guess my thought process was, is the same way with the City of Port St. Joe, sometimes we need to try to work together a little bit more because they're the same taxpayer. I mean, if it's, and I understand, I understand, uh, you know, the theory that we've got to keep some of that separated, but it's the same taxpayer that's trying to figure out how to, how to get this done. So, you know, I don't even know. It might be something that we can think on a little bit and put it on that, we, we've got an, uh, workshop. Uh, when's that workshop?
Monday, next Monday.
Monday? Might be something we can put on the workshop to at least discuss some more. I mean, if there's any way we can prevent extra expenditure, it's gonna affect our taxpayers too, then, maybe we, maybe we can do that. If not, Joe, at the end of the day, you're probably absolutely right. You've thought about it a whole lot more than I have. I just thought about it when the mayor called me up there. So, you know, if y'all would like to add it on to the workshop, we could add it on the workshop.
Whatever y'all decide, I'll, I'll work with.
You're the expert.
I, I've given you my opinion on that.
I know they have a lot, they, the City of Weewaw has a laydown yard that they use because they pick up all the limb debris and the leaves and inside the, it's valid, and they carry it to theirs. They don't bring it down to our landfill, so they do have a area that they're utilizing now. It's just for normal operations.
Yeah. Uh, no, I've got one more thing. Anything, anything else from Joe?
I'm, I'm good.
I've got one, one other thing, and, uh, I, I've got a Cape Palms Park on Cape Sandblasts that's been there, I guess, about twenty years, at Mark. Twenty, twenty-plus years. One of the, uh, roofs is, is about dilapidated, and if we let it go, it's already rotted some of the decking. We let it go any farther, it's gonna, it's gonna get the, the rafters. We got an estimate of about five thousand dollars. If the board would allow me, let me work with Mr. Butler to find that five thousand. I think I've got some and, uh, maybe a few dollars left in the TDC amount, but I think there's a, a few more areas that I can get it without taking it from reserve or anything. Five thousand dollars to replace the roof on, um, a pavilion at the Cape Sandblasts, uh, well, it's Cape Palms Park, and it, it, we are gonna have to do it now, we're gonna have to replace the rafters and everything else. So, uh, if, if the board would allow, put it in the form of a motion to, for me to find the five thousand.
Motion by Mr. Jaeger?
Second.
Second by Mr. McAmore. Do I have anybody opposing it? No oppose, motion carries five and no.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple items, uh, I was up last night attending a ballgame at Honeyville Park, and a lot of the parents there, uh, approached me about getting the Board of County Commissioners to, uh, post signs not allowing dogs, animals inside the chain link fences where the ballgames are going on and where all the spectators and their children are, are there. So, uh, I told them it would be brought before the board this morning, and, uh, if I could, I'd like to put it in a motion that we post signs there, this Honeyville Park.
Got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels, second for comments? I get a second?
I don't have, I'll do a second on it. I don't have a problem with that. Mr. McDaniel, I'm up there regularly too. I haven't seen a, I really haven't seen a major issue with it. I have seen a dog or two come in, but I've also noticed the people that brought them in, they've had them on lease, they've been well maintained. But I still, I don't have a problem with that, so I, I second.
I got a second by Mr. McAmore. Oppose? No oppose, motion carries five and no.
Okay, again, and, uh, we're back on animals again. I know we have an animal control ordinance. I got a call last night. I immediately called the, uh, Animal Control Officer in the Whispering Pines subdivision. Family, we've had a family that's moved in renting a home there, and they have, yesterday was supposedly three, I don't know if the word pit bulls, but anyway, there were three bull, uh, three dogs, they were either pit or, anyway, bulldogs were running loose. And I gave the, uh, Animal Control Officer the resonance that they were out at, and he was to go first thing this morning, contact the owners, and those animals must be pinned up for our animal control ordinance. Secondly, uh, and last, let me give you a report, uh, tomorrow and Wednesday, uh, Friday, I'll be in Appalachia Cola with the ACF, that's the Appalachia Cola Chattahoochee and Flint Rivers Water System, who I represent Gulf County on that board. City of Atlanta, Georgia, presently, they have access to nine percent of Lake Lanier. They put in a proposal to, they're requesting now twenty-five percent of the water out of Lake Lanier or to be used in the Atlanta area. Now, we're in the process tomorrow and Friday to start river flow studies on the Appalachia Cola River, not to see how much water we would like, but how much it's going to take to maintain the life of, uh, Appalachia Cola Bay. This is, that's one of the, uh, issues that will come up tomorrow at the meeting, and also Friday. I just want to let you know, Atlanta's wanting to, uh, siphon off more water, meaning the Appalachia Cola River is a good possibility, and these droughts is gonna get lower and lower in the seafood industry and, uh, not only in, uh, Appalachia Cola, which a lot of people in Gulf County go over in Oyster, is gonna affect us. So, hopefully, we can get someone to start representing, uh, you know, the state of Florida. You have to remember this, and I was unaware of it, but the two main rivers that make up the Appalachia Cola River is in the state of Georgia. I thought Alabama on half the Chattahoochee, that's not correct. The Georgia State Line goes to the west bank of the High Water Line of the Chattahoochee River. So the Chattahoochee River is the sole control of the state of Georgia. But, uh, anyway, I'll be over tomorrow and Wednesday, and, uh, Friday, and, uh, see what we can do on this. I just want to give you a report on that, but fighting and trying to do something to help not only Franklin County, but Gulf County also. Mr. Chairman, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to, um, start out just from the thank Mr. Mike Daniels. Me and him completed our advanced CCA classes down in Gainesville. We will be graduating from those classes and...
That's correct.
Very helpful. Opened a light that you don't normally get a chance to see, but they, I think it was very helpful. Um, I want to ask, it's a little near. It's a little near. On the uniform receipts right here in the, uh, agenda.
Sir.
When I first come on, all, all these receipts weren't being put in the agenda, now all of a sudden, a bunch of them...
Yes, sir, the, um, the clerk advised us, since we do not have a current lease with the contract com- with the uniform company, that all invoices had to be approved by the board until we got such a, uh, contract. We have not gone out to rebid. The last time we bid out the uniform contract, we had no bids. Um, the company that we had used prior to the bid, um, sold out to the current company. So, um, we did not get a satisfactory lease with that company, and I believe, I've spoken with Mr. Dantford in reference to this. We had some issues with this company. It's the reason why we have not asked the board for a new lease, um, a new contract with this company. Um, they have begun to, um, repair some of the issues that we've had. Um, so, we're kind of in a phase right now of, no, no one bid the job. Uh, the company that we have is, is working on some of the issues we have. And prior to bringing the board a lease, we wanted to make sure that they could keep their promises and, and maintain that lease according to our specifications. So that's the reason they're currently being brought before the board, is because we don't have a contract.
Or are we working on trying to get that contract in place so that we don't have to?
I, I'll get back with Mr. Dantford, and we, and I have a, an example of a contract, and I'll get with him, and we'll review it, bring it back to the board.
Question, question, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Attorney, can't we just, Mr. Butler, the administrator, has to sign off on these invoices. Is that correct, Mr. Butler? You sign off on these invoices?
I sign off on those.
You sign off?
For Mr. Butler.
Can't the board take action today then, so you don't have to do that and just give you authority to sign off on them? Is that, uh, legal, Mr. Attorney? Is that why we need to do it to make it easier for us, so we're gonna have to have all this paperwork every, every morning?
Just for the board's information, the, the current pricing that we have is the same pricing we had with the last correct bidder that had sold out to them. So the price has not changed. Um, we're getting the same price as we had under the previous contract prior to sell out, so...
Mr. Commissioner, um, I think it's more of a policy, uh, issue than it is anything else. In terms of requests of the clerk's office, they are requested that they be put in there. I think it's gonna be addressed, we're doing a contract purchasing and procurement policy for your consideration, and when we introduce that to you probably next month, that's gonna take care of a lot of that, because things such as this uniform will be under the threshold that we're gonna propose and recommend to this county commission to give the county staff, the county supervisors, and the clerk's office, so they have clarification of what's authorized by the department heads. Um, and once we introduce that policy next month, I don't think this is, ideally, it won't be an issue anymore. We're gonna remove a lot of this from that.
Okay.
Right.
Do we have anything else from the public?
Pat Hardman, Coastal Community Association, one-two-three Mayor in Elaine. I just want to say thank you. Um, we have, uh, uh, trash containers out on, on the Cape, and, uh, they got pretty well in disrepair. There wasn't any money in the budget, and the TDC and Warren, uh, found some money and, and put out some. A committee from the CCA went out and found the most concentrated areas, 'cause they didn't have enough to replace all of them. Um, they were put out, they're good-looking, they're, they have the doggy things by them, and we really appreciate them doing that. We'd ask that, um, in next year's budget, if possible, uh, that we'll have a few more of them put into the budget so that we can hit the other spots. Uh, I, I really want to thank Jennifer and Warren for going out and doing that for us this year. Unfortunately, um, we didn't get them all back everywhere that people wanted them, uh, even though the committee tried to get the most logical spots. And, um, one of the, one of the subdivisions put out their own can, and we are picking up, county is picking that up. But then we obviously have some, uh, relish childish or dissatisfied citizen that keeps kicking off the, the, uh, the CD, the DDC signs and what have you. I want to apologize for whoever that happens to be, even though I don't know who it is, but if I do, I might go spank him. Um, but anyway, I hope we do appreciate the effort. I would also like for y'all to look at the fact that, um, on the, on the bed tax, we have a number of renters who, um, uh, rent for themselves along the Cape and, and over, uh, St. Joe Beach. And I've got a sneaky suspicion that a lot of those folks aren't coming up to the bar and paying their bed taxes. Um, and I, and that would be something that I would ask TDC to look at, that, that would be a relatively easy thing to do. I, I hate to do this, ask for taxes on somebody, but if other people are paying the taxes, uh, and you aren't, then you're getting a, a, a discount for your clients, and putting the other people in, in a, a position of having to compete unfairly. So I, I would like, if we're gonna have a bed tax, everybody renting ought to be paying the bed tax, and, and so I would appreciate if y'all would, would look at that. Um, you could go out on those websites that are by vacation by owners, and compare that with who's actually paying taxes to most, most of you people are doing it right. And, and there's just a few that aren't, and I just would like for you to look at that. Um, 'cause TDC does a lot for us now in the beach cleanup, in the beach, uh, taking care of the beaches, so I'd appreciate that.
We, we have talked about that, Pat, you know, many times in the TDC, and there are some stumbling blocks to even finding out who's, who's paying, who's not paying, and, and Jennifer can speak to that better than I can, but it's a difficult thing to, to police, so to speak.
As, as one of the people went in and paid theirs, as they do each month, the person taking the money... taking the money said, "Thank you, you're one of the few people that do this." So they're out there. There's over 300, I think, 380 houses rented by owner, uh, out on the Cape area. And just, everybody ought to be paying the fair share. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Do we have anyone else from the public?
I mean, Mr. Chairman? Oh, we got one.
Mr. Mike Daniels?
Mr. Chairman, I have one other item. Uh, is anyone from the EDA here? Ms. Sellers, would you, would you please come up? Maybe you can shed some light. I wish they were, uh, Mr. Magnuson here, but I, I don't see...
All five were here last time and none are here this time.
Okay, well, it's always good to see you and you can answer 90% of questions. I went over the bylaws. Are you familiar with the bylaws?
I've been over them, yes.
Okay. I have some questions that, uh, of concern and I went through in general, they're, they're great, acceptable with the exception, there's a little, what I call it, the algebra, the X unknown in here. I need to clear this up for the people. But, uh, my understanding here, correct me if I'm wrong, the Economic Development Alliance has five members. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Uh, and they are called the Board of Directors.
Yes, sir.
All right, then we're going over into Phase, uh, Section 2 under Article 4. It says Preferred Partners Public, that would be the Board of County Commissioners and we'll say the city of Weewahon, Hitzka, the city of Port St. Joe. And then below it in the Section 3, it has a Private Sector. Okay? You familiar with that?
Yes, sir.
All right, it states in there that a minimum, uh, let me just, I'll just hit the high spots. All that it's saying, if you post $5,000 or you do a $5,000, uh, buy-in and, uh, then it goes on down further, says a special category of preferred partners, recognizing agents or entities have contributed a large amount in excess of $5,000, they may have a voting partnership up to two additional members if approved by the, uh, Board of Directors. Now, explain this, uh, is this $5,000 buy you a vote? I wish Mr. Magnuson was here. He's one I really want to talk to.
Me too. And I thought he would be. I might talk to him.
So what I'm saying is, according to this, the county has three people.
Okay.
And the taxpayers right out here putting up $80,000.
Yes, sir.
Okay. According to this, if I read it right, if you put in $5,000, you have a vote. A vote to what?
I, I believe it's an advisory committee, is that...
Who has a controlling vote? Now, if that's the case, then it shows here the city of Port St. Joe puts up $10,000 and they got one vote.
Well, um...
Let me finish, please. And the third one, the city of Weewahon, Hitzka shows zero. Did they get a vote? They hadn't contributed according to this.
Not yet, they have not.
All right, I need to know, where's the cap on these, uh, can you buy votes? Where's the cap? What votes controls?
It's an advisory committee that will vote, uh, to suggest things to the five-member board, kind of like with the PDRB. They, they vote to recommend things to you. It's, it's the same type of situation.
But is there a cap on this, uh, right now? Are the vote, are we just buying votes? Is that what we're trying to do? Because if that's the case, 10 of us could go put up $50,000 and have 10 votes where the people out there put up 80 and only have three votes.
Right. We'd love to somebody, we walk in, put right $50,000.
Oh, I want to. I, I would eventually like the county completely out of this and I want you to take it and go with it and see if you can get us out of it.
But that's not...
I know, we're in the emphasis stage. I know that. I understand that.
That's not the plan. The plan is just to raise funding and try to match, eventually match our private, our public fund with private fund. That's my goal is to have an even match within two years.
I know.
Uh, to where we can lean one way or the other, however y'all decide to do that. But no, it's, it's, it's an, it's the same as the PDRB. It's, it's an advisory committee, uh, that would, to get more brains into the particular issue or situation and then to advise to the general board.
All right. But I just, you know, reading over it and all, and like I say, 95% of it is great, but I just had these questions on this, this vote buying, if that's what it is. It looks like you pay $5,000 and buy you a vote. But, uh, anyway, and secondly, uh, after this meeting, get with the chairman. He and I were down, uh, finishing up our, uh, advanced certification and he had the opportunity, uh, I was talking with a commissioner from Broward County that was telling me that she had spoken with our chairman here and, uh, you need to get with him after the meeting. I think he can help you help us with this port over there.
I've already called her.
Oh, you have?
Yes, sir.
Well, okay, well, that's great.
But we'll talk afterward as well. Follow up on our, on our conversation there.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
I, I just wanted to clarify that the, um, private buy-in is an effort to, uh, bring in private funding and decrease public funding and that is our goal. And, um, it is only three seats from county. I think that the one seat from the city of Weewahon Hitzka is a placeholder in hopes that they will contribute. That's my impression. I, I can't swear to that. But the, um, the larger amount of money coming from the county is protected in that the county is the only one that has an agreement with the EDA. They are basically in control of the EDA and have laid out a, just a tremendous, um, tremendous task for the EDA to complete on an $80,000 budget. It's going to be a very difficult task based on that agreement that was approved. But I just wanted to put that out there, that it's not, um, not, uh, $5,000 per seat and the city, the county only got three seats. We are in control under that agreement.
That's all. I just want some clarification in here and, uh...
While I'm up here, touch on a couple of things. Sure. I was at the city Weewahon Hitzka Commission meeting last night and it went very well as usual. They're, they're, they're very, Mr. Gaskin and, uh, Mr. Ventshu, and they're very interested in what we've got, uh, going on. They know that, uh, there's a, your Bill's Dollar Store up there. I've showed it a couple of times in the last couple of weeks to a, uh, I guess, trying to think, not saying too much. But anyway, it's a call center type situation and that building is available and it's in excellent condition. And most of the call centers right now, they're going into old Walmarts. When Walmart builds a new super center, they leave the old one. A lot of them are going to Walmarts, grocery stores and things like that. So the Bill's Dollar Store is a good lo, a good example for a small in or outbound type call center. So we've, we've showed it twice in the last couple of weeks and Mr. Jerry Gaskin's been very fortunate to have the key to that so I can get in and out of that. So we talked about that a little bit. But also, uh, they told me to make sure that I turn all my information to them by late May, early June because their thoughts are to participate. They're, they're kind of seeing what the county was going to do and, and in that area and, but, uh, they're going to, to try to do as much as they can with their limited resources, obviously. They've got, uh, budget issues like everybody does, but I think they see that we are working hard and that we're making good effort. And so I will, uh, make another presentation to them next month to get into their budget in July. So that's the plan as of last night. Last meeting, uh, that I went to, uh, before that was Opportunity Florida Meeting and Commissioner Yeager was there, Ms. Kupinski and, uh, Mr. Pitts and the Port Authority went with me. And they, they mentioned us again about getting a tower location in the Beacon Hill area for getting the broadband connected into Gulf County to be part of that initiative. And I was going to make sure, just kind of remind you of that. Mr. Brooke, who's now the director of that, replaced Rick Markham about nine months ago. He would like to come sometime soon and make a presentation to the county and probably both cities as well about that. And Warren, I don't know if y'all talked, y'all were over there talking after, we, we had a lot of people mingling conversations there and I don't know if he had anything else to say to you about that or not.
Yeah, he, he did, but basically it's just a timing issue. We need to get him down here when he's got the time and get him to a board meeting and, and, uh, county's actually already committed to spot, uh, on, on Beacon Hill for it, but, uh, I think they're getting ready for, to, to, uh, get that going, so.
That's great. I mean, it's going to be good for everything from helping our children have access at home to helping us recruit industry with top-notch technology, broadband and things like that, so.
Ms. Sellers, go out and get us some private buy-ins and I'm looking to you and, uh, this board is, and I think, I think you can do it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I'm, I'm behind you 100%. I want you to know that.
I'll give you 100%. Thanks.
Thank you.